We'll call the meeting to order at 6:33 on Tuesday, September 12. Thank you all for coming. I hope you had a good summer. Welcome to all the new folks. It's kind of fun to have it here at Pine Hill. Good to see you guys. Community comments. She's repinging them. We'll move on. Item three, reports. I'll turn it over to you, Andrew, and you can turn it over to whomever you'd like.
Perfect. Well, Dr. Brown is here with Ms. Daly. So Barbara has a report to present. Let's go with it.
I'm reading it on my phone. If you don't have one, I have it in your... We had a most fabulous opening from a staff perspective, from a student perspective. The energy was high. Everyone was poised and at the ready. And the superintendent will talk in more detail about staffing and enrollment. But I wanted to mention our new classroom in the fourth grade is impressive. And as you recall, we increased our school site by a point two and our preschool teacher from half-time to full-time. Preschoolers started last week. And there are lots of them, and they are exuberant. We had 13 new students all told in our grades one through five. And that is a much lower number than one I've shared with you the past two summers. So we had relatively low in-migration over the summer. So that was very controlled. A list of all the new staffing, again, in the superintendent's report. He provides more detail. I wanted to share, obviously, a shout-out to our custodial maintenance and technology staff. It always amazes me how with multiple projects and lots of competing interests, they miraculously pull the level of detail together that they do. Peter Gimlet continues to exemplify dedication and competency in ways that impress us all. Very excited to have started to expend a couple DSEF grants, but in particular, the Recession for All grant. If you were on our back playground right now, you would notice a shed in the very beginning stages of installation and some new picnic tables, sitting areas, umbrellas, and a whole plethora of games and activities that will be introduced over the upcoming weeks for students not to micromanage recess and play, but to afford more variety and opportunity for kids who prefer something that's not as open-ended. From cornhole to jungle to Skittles to giant connect hole.
Yeah, it's exciting.
It's a cool-a-hoop, all kinds of fun.
We'll offer to host our leadership meetings down there. We'll get those all set up. I wanted to do a shout-out to the Pine Hill faculty. Like in past summers, the level of curriculum work that went on this summer was very impressive. There were 73 days all told that we compensated educators from different grade levels, different departments. Teachers wanted to get a head start on unpacking the new Everyday Math curriculum that we upgraded into and aligning assessments around math. There were many curriculum projects cross-Chickering and Pine Hill for our special subject teachers around art, music, library, health, et cetera. And Lori's been working on continuing to grow the Makerspace model here and also took a hard look, important look at social-emotional learning resources over in our Owl's Nest. So that was a great, made a great headway this summer. You probably recall from previous summers, about three, four years ago, we stuck our toe in to what we call the Math Workshop model. We have a very differentiated model for reading and writing. And it has been important for us to grow a similar structure in our math instruction model. So teachers who were sort of on the precipice of that three, four summers ago are now sharing practices. And that model has become important and homegrown within and across all of our grade levels. Pine Hill happenings, you see just in the last two weeks, we've been doing a lot of activity with back-to-school teacher meetings. And I wanted to frame in a general way the big tenants that will be working on this year from a professional development perspective. We talked about this last year when we were launching the draft of the School Improvement Plan. But big happenings, continued curriculum development in science. Thanks to budget opportunity, we were able to grow science kits across all of our grade levels. Inconsistent implementation with the Chickerin School. Our teachers will be spending a lot of time behind the scenes in grade-level teams and with our math curriculum coordinator, Jackie, to understand and fully actualize Everyday Math Four. There's more robust assessment, writing within the math curriculum, and home connections are areas that I'm particularly excited for us to grow in addition to being aligned with math standards. We, as you know from conversations about district goals and school goals, we're excited to take more focus steps around our strategies and skills that we all have as grown-ups and as children to be culturally responsive and respectful and understanding of how to navigate differences and sometimes conflict and to harness opportunity to be a really rich and poignant and well-rounded and open-minded community of learners. We'll continue our work with Challenge Success, which is really exciting. Our new therapy dog was here just today. Was it today? It's a little smaller than last year's therapy dog. I don't know if you all met Rocky. Rocky was a horse. Rocky you could hug. Now we have a... I forget. But again, we don't judge by size or shag or fur texture, but we have a smaller therapy dog working in our building this year. That's a particular pet project, pun intended, of our school nurse and our school psychologist who are working around connectedness and anxiety-reducing mindfulness practices. And I'm sure I forgot something in here. Oh, a baby. It's kind of a baby. We'll be facilitating a curriculum review, preschool through 12th grade, with our English Language Arts curriculum. And that will be important to look at what we're doing within and across grade levels, across schools and systems-wide. Those are our big focus areas for this year. We continue the professional structure here at Pine Hill. Every Monday after school, our teachers meet, while they're obligated to meet twice a month per the contract, for a certain amount of minutes. Our teachers are committed, our educators are committed, to be here every Monday after school. So that's when we do a lot of this behind-the-scenes inquiry and collaboration. Any words of wisdom?
Not really. I think you've got it.
Thank you, Barbara.
Jackie's tackling the lunchroom this year. Last year, it was parent traffic and bus safety and sort of decorum for drop-off and pickup so that we were all safe and accounted for and respectful. And this year, she is among many data teams and curriculum conversations and discourse across grade levels. One of the things she's tackling on the front line is how to make the lunchroom as nutritious mentally and physically as possible. Right now, it's a little raucous day, so we're gonna tackle that.
From buses and...
Teen the children in so many ways. So thank you, Barbara. Thank you, Jackie, for your efforts as well. Our assistant superintendent, Beth McCoy, is here as well. And I would like to give her a report.
Okay. So I have been in the office since July 1st, and I've had the opportunity to start working with the central office team and building relationships. And the district-wide leadership team is... Having the summer together was a great opportunity to identify, I think, our vision as a team, our strengths and weaknesses, how we're going to grow, the work that we're going to continue around cultural responsiveness as leaders in the district, as well as the curriculum. And once students arrive, and we're now sprinting the marathon, and it's exciting because we now have teachers who seem to interact with us, but it's also very busy, as you'll hear in the next few minutes. So as you know, last year, our district went through the core initiative program review process. And they looked at our adherence to regulations around English language learning, special education, and civil rights. And there were 85 standards in which we either met or exceeded the expectations of the Department of Education. And there was only a handful in which we needed to fully implement the regulations. And since then, we have developed a corrective action plan that was approved by DESI. And we have an internal chart with who's responsible, what the work product looks like, and the deadline. And we are working to meet the deadlines of the corrective action plan. And I am confident that we will have everything completed well before the June deadline. As for professional development, Dr. Brown mentioned that there's been a lot of exciting happenings across the district over the summer. Many of our faculty engage in work around more science inquiry learning, ELL practices, mindfulness, building resilient students. In late August, we had Ann Larson here from the Landmark School. We did some work with both the elementary cohort of teachers as well as the secondary cohort of teachers around students' strategies to support students with language-based learning disabilities. It was a large number of teachers who came to engage in that work. And I think one of the big takeaways having staff be part of the workshop is that the skills that you talked about, starting a lesson with or using executive functioning skills, outlining note-reading skills, all of those skills that are reviewed in those two days are applicable and beneficial for all kids. So I think it's great to see that we can all build our toolboxes to support all of our learners across the districts. As Dr. Brown mentioned, we're going to continue our work on our cultural responsiveness. Medway has given us 10 seats to engage in one of their courses that many of us as teachers took for our former districts. And I think it's important to build that foundation here in the district so that information is run out to the teachers. And many of them are interested in signing up, which is a great sign. The mentoring and induction program, on August 24th, we kicked it off. We had 19, and that number continues to fluctuate over time as the number of new educators we have in the district. But that was our first official day together. We brought mentees and the new educators and their mentors together for the full day in the morning. We did some team-building activities, talked about what it's like to have a healthy relationship where you can rely on someone, a trusted colleague, to ask some questions about the culture and climate of Dover Sherbrooke as well as things that might be particular to a content area or a building. And then we did some technology training. We took a bus tour. We learned the ins and outs of Farm Street versus Farm Road and the Dover Demon and the Cow. We had lunch together, and then everybody went back to their home-based buildings for some time to get familiar to their spaces there. So we'll have three follow-up sessions throughout the year to cover special education, student support, and any other topics that our new educators feel as they need some help with. As Dr. Brown mentioned, we have our English Language Arts curriculum review this year. So as we are supporting the science folks in year two of their review process, as well as implementing Everyday Math Four at both elementary schools, we're going to be tackling English as well. The middle and high school folks say, "What's the big deal?" And the elementary folks say, "Well, we're juggling it all." So we're going to find a way to make sure that it is a productive and effective process, but that it meets the needs of the teachers in terms of their upbringing as well. So I've been meeting with curriculum leaders, instructional coaches throughout the district and not with, actually, Ms. Daly with today, having been through the science curriculum process last year. And that was the English department this afternoon. And I think we formulated a plan, which was able to get Decer KEO's approval. I'll be happy to present to you about how we're going to work through the English curriculum review this year. But basically, it'll be English teachers working on mapping out their curriculum during their common planning time, their PLC time, their department time to the mass state standards, making sure that everything's covered and that we have a nice schooling sequence pre-K through 12, while also that there's a district-wide committee that's going to be looking at curriculum instruction, assessment, professional development, and resources from a more higher level to see that we're meeting our needs and keeping up with research and best practices in English. Educator evaluation. So again, we're using Teach Point. We're in year two of that. So the system is up and running. And educators are now working with their evaluators to develop goals for the year in support of much of what you've already heard today, being school-wide goals and district goals. And we will be entering in our goals for the year and then starting the observation and feedback process as that was normally continuing throughout this year. And lastly, the NCAS results. So preliminary results were released in late August for the legacy NCAS exams, which are the old NCAS exams that were given in some grades. And those were primarily for principals to look at for discrepancies that need to be reported before the official results will be distributed in October. They're still working through the next-generation NCAS exam scores. So we do not have official reports or performance levels yet because they're still trying to determine benchmark and cut off scores for the different levels. So we're hopeful that in mid-October, late October, we'll have that data to share. And again, we'll be sharing that information with you as is past practice, along with EA3 scores. And that's what we're interested in, the long-range view of our Sherbrooke nights.
Do you have any questions?
Okay, next is you.
Next in line would be me. So thank you, everyone, for your reports. It was really a special opening for me this year, I have to admit. After having all these years of my children in the system and myself having been through the system, that was a really unique and special opportunity to stand before the teachers on that opening day, on the 28th, or the return day for teachers. And as a parent and community member, have the opportunity and educator to thank all these people who've had such a huge impact in my own personal life. And I don't think that many parents have that chance. So that was unique, special, and that was a proud moment for me. We went through that morning just like floating. I really felt like people were floating. Everyone was excited to be back. And we had lots of opportunity to meet new people. We did the introduction, as usual, of the new staff, of the admins, of Ms. McCoy and itself. And we also took the opportunity, as has been the tradition, to recognize those staff members who've been with us for extraordinary amounts of time. And in the case of Sarah Richards, it was 30 years. So Sarah has served for 30 years, which is impressive. So we were certainly thankful for Sarah. It was a nice experience. The first day, or just prior to the kids arriving, some of you joined us scotting who was there. We walked the buildings to see all the work that was done. It's truly impressive. Pine Hill School is in excellent, excellent shape. Considering the number of years it's been since the original structure was built and this addition and the other addition at the other end of the building, it's really come a long way. But it's a tribute to all of the folks like Peter and the custodians and maintenance folks who did such a great job this summer. And really Ralph Kelly making sure, working with Don, that all of our capital projects were completed. That was a nice experience, and it was just impressive to see how things have pulled together. The first day for students, just incredible to see the kids, the joy on their faces. I had one student come up to me, and she was curious about me. She said, "You're new here, aren't you?" So I was waiting for these kids to cower. Here comes this strange-looking guy. No, no. She wanted to know who I was. So she was a sweet kid. But it was just a great atmosphere in the building in the early days of the school year. And just to see the staff members interact with one another. But I have to say, I was truly surprised by the enthusiastic greeting I received from three teachers in the main office. It's just so unusual for people to come up and say hello to me, introduce themselves, and say how excited they are about being here and happy to be working together. It was just a really, really nice field. I had to pinch myself a bit. I had the opportunity to say hello to some of the bus drivers, including my former bus driver, Mayla Dunn. Just saying something, folks. She's a terrific person and really shaped me as a human being.
She asked if you were going to ride her bus this year. I said, "Maybe in a pinch."
Actually, the truth is, she told me I was riding her bus this year and that Dr. Brown had suggested... No, I don't know if that's true or not. But I'd be happy to ride that bus. I want the kid to be happy to see me.
If you bring Pokemon cards, they will be.
All of that combined is just amazing, just a great, great start. As mentioned, we have the new staff attached. There is an addition from the original sheet that I sent you, which was Laura, Olgar, the PT, who was added recently. But she's on Barbara's list, I do believe. So those are our new hires. I don't know if... I think it's been traditional. We just got the list. I'm not sure. Do you want me to go down the list?
No, I don't think so. It's nice that you have to... If they replace somebody or not, I was curious with the educational assistants. Those were replacements too, right?
Yes. And we're still seeing a lot of new...
And the EA3s are on the new EA3?
If they're hired in. They're hired in now as an EA3.
So were these hired in as an EA3?
Two of them are brand-new, so they'll be on the new schedule. I think one was a re-signed.
So the EA3 still has two V's?
Ally Corsey's actually an EA2. The two that follow her as EA3s were hired in on the new EA3.
So there's only two new EA3s?
And Georgia Manier is from Framingham Public Schools. I just want to point that out, otherwise it looks like we're pilfering a lot from a particular district.
So I'm sure you're familiar with this, but there is a lot of movement typically among teaching assistants. Some people do stay in the role for a long time. A lot of times, we're talking about certified teachers who are looking for an opportunity. And a lot of times, those open up at the very end of the summer or at the beginning of the school year. So that's fairly typical to see in a school system such as ours. We have great people, very talented people. So we're still seeing some fluctuation, and that will continue this.
Hosted two educational assistants just this morning. And one of our EA's retired at the end of last year. And two did go on to get teaching jobs in other districts. So I feel... It's okay for my commentary. Compared to other schools, our educational assistants have... Many of them have long tenures here.
So, yes, you also can see enclosed in your packets the student enrollment by grade, the actual breakdown in each teacher's class. Those are the latest figures. Those, again, can change. You'll note on our staffing and enrollment analysis the one that was in your packet had an incorrect number where we had 430 in that top aggregate enrollment under 17, 18. The original one we gave you showed 430. That was excluding pre-K. So excluding pre-K, that number's actually 397, which aligns with the enrollment sheet by classroom.
So I'm curious, what was the number at the end of the year? The 408 is September data. What was the... Was it 430?
I got it right here. We had 412. June 1st was 412 last year in our last pack. Is that what you were looking for?
Yes. And so, Barbara, when you said there were 13 new students, what's that mean? If there were 15 less K through 12 students than last year, what's the 13 new?
The grade five is not...
We matriculated 71 children to middle school, and we registered only 45 into kindergarten, 49 into kindergarten.
Two left kindergarten, come in first grade. This is the class that moved into... This is what's now... This is what moved into there. 56 is now... 56 in first grade is now 57.
So 13 new are the...
Somewhere to go, Mr. Graham, which we've had a name for sometimes of...
Greg. We're on national television.
We had sometimes 25 to 35 new students influx. So 13 is back to...
Okay.
I think that was the summer I came here, so you can blame me. It was part of it.
Yeah, it was happening times. So I was making mention of the in-migration at grades one through five were 13 students.
One caveat for this enrollment data is that it fluctuates. It's still early. We wanted to give you guys a snapshot of where we are right out of the gates because I know there were questions. You were looking closely at our enrollment figures as you talked about budget last year and staffing needs. So I would just simply say that the October 1st report is in place for a reason because there still is fluctuation when we didn't move out. And those are October 1st numbers prior to that. So the 10-11 numbers, the 11-12, those other columns are looking at October 1st numbers. So this is just September data.
Anybody have any questions about the enrollment support? Thank you for providing... Yes, thank you very much.
Finally, I just want to mention very quickly how much I appreciate the support that I had in this transition, both from you, Greg, and from the other chairs, but really from all of the school committee members and the central office staff and the principals and the support staff in the buildings, the support staff at the central office, Ralph Kelly and his crew. All of these people really made me feel valued and appreciated and supportive in this process. So I want to thank all those folks. I typically forget. I also want to thank importantly, Bill McCallbait, for really leading me in a great position, as I said, foot in Dover Sherbrooke. I didn't have to worry about this or that. He had transitioned me well through the process. And he's still at it. Bill has moved on to a new opportunity, also in a regional system, so at the Oxburgh.
Are you going to go out?
No.
You mentioned at the Oxburgh.
I thought there was a limit to how many years he could do that and continue to get retirement.
He continues to be in demand. So they have to indicate that they couldn't find someone at that age.
But didn't they join together?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I told him it'd be a great opportunity for him to serve to here and then see there. See if they're close, gone.
How many guys make it up?
So I want to thank Bill, and I also wanted to thank Cheryl and yourself, who were really just a critical link for me in the transitions.
All right, thank you very much. Item four is the FY '17 budget closeout.
Closeout. So we really fell right... Really close to where we were in June 6th when I last reported. So the quick note version is, if we look at our operating budget in totality, we had about a $99,000 positive variance in the in-district. But we had $111,000 unbudgeted out-of-district overage, which left us with about a negative $12,000. But as you know, we were able to obtain from the town Sherbrooke that you're telling me in April, an additional $70,000 to our budget to sort of provide a safety net. So that is what covers your $12,000. So you're not really ending the year at a negative, but I wanted to show it that way because that's based on your original budget. But they will take that $12,000 against the $70 that they gave us. But then they'll be able to put the rest back into their... So we do appreciate the time being there to sort of provide a safety net as you were experiencing forks in your access replacements.
So that was... So refresh my memory. So the... So that was, so refresh my memory. So the cost for FY18 was coming from the special fund that we had set aside, right? So we had, we have additional costs for this coming year, for this year we're in.
Right.
And that was funded from the, I don't know what you call it.
Well, they, on their side of the funding, they used the stabilization fund, but then replenished it with free cash, when they built your budget to make sure.
Right, okay.
Yeah. So I don't know if you want to go through, none of the numbers really changed. We did get a little more circuit breaker reimbursement than we thought, because they true-up at the end, and we got closer to 73% reimbursement versus 70%. And other than that, remember that we did not utilize some other funds that we were going to do, and I'll talk about that when we get to the revolving fund and special revenues. Is there any questions on just your basic operations, the outcome from fiscal year 17?
I just have a question about, you mentioned circuit breaker. We thought it was going to be 70, it came back to 73. Can you explain that?
So the state, when they initially set up your circuit breaker payments for the fiscal year, they estimate you were going to get 70% reimbursement on our eligible out-of-district costs.
Right.
Then when they finished, the end of the year, they had money left in that pool. So they go back and they spread it.
Okay.
And you got a 73.
State-wide, they go back.
State-wide.
Okay, and we budgeted 65.
You budgeted 60.
Sixty.
When I was in addition to the special.
Extraordinary.
Yeah, extraordinary.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Exactly. And that extraordinary relief is, the relief that we got in May was really why we didn't have to use the bulk of the $70,000. If we had not received that $52,000, it would have been way more than $70,000.
Just briefly, the extraordinary relief is when you have, you incur expenses that are above a certain level.
Because we had costs that exceeded 125% of our eligible circuit breaker costs from the year before we were eligible to file.
Okay.
So if you want to take a look at the special revenues and revolving fund activities, you have one of your quarterly statements in this one as of June 30th. And just to briefly run through, as you remember, I'll just refresh on building rental, starting last year from discussions that we had here in the fall, we have been charging the custodial overtime associated with housing events to the building rental versus your operating month. So that's the $4,500 that you see. The cafeteria has been doing robust business. If you remember, I noted for you, you've increased the price in fiscal year 17. We've seen a slight uptick in participation. And in all three of our districts, Janelle has forced not to have any major breakdowns with her kids. So you've built a healthy $40,000 balance right now, which is, we credit, the highest it's been in a long time. Circuit breaker, if you just follow through, we started the year with that carry forward of $15,999 that you see described a lot. $346,784 is what we took in for the various circuit breaker revenues. And your expenditures, gift fund, we charged $354,914. Because of the little extra that we got at the end of the year, we ended up just leaving some of that in your circuit breaker fund. So there's an additional $700 in case we have any issues this year. That's an addition that we can use. So we decided just to leave it there versus wiping it out. The gift fund, just to highlight, the $10,000 revenue again is the gracious gift from MUDS that is going towards your AB system, which is installed. Are you completely hooked up? So the AB system, it's all there, it just needs to be completely hooked up. But the $10,000 will go against that capital project with the town fund. You'll see your Pine Hill preschool revolving fund, and then you have the solid gift fund. So on a quarterly basis, we'll provide you these reports. It's always important that you just keep an eye on.
Yes, that's great. We really haven't, we've seen some of this before, but the circuit breaker I don't think was included, right?
Yeah, I had a circuit breaker.
Yeah, that's nice.
Yeah, because you normally didn't have a balance.
But so the balance, the fund balance, for instance, non-resident tuition, that's, we're going to be spending that in this coming budget.
Well, this is, this actually is money from last year that we didn't, if you read, I said I left it. We didn't touch it because we got the extraordinary circuit breaker money in. We initially thought we were going to use this last year. We didn't. So you're now going to have a little bit of a buffer there too, because you're going to take in...
Tuition, lower this.
Tuition for another student. And we only, we only built the budget on one student.
Right, okay.
Yeah. So you have a little safety net there.
All right. So let me ask you a quick question. Does anybody understand the preschool discussion? And it doesn't break even, right? Or it's not breaking even now?
Well, no, it's partially funded by the operating budget and partially funded by the revolving, because it's a mixture of.
But clearly, it was, it was, it had revenue, I mean, it had, I guess, net positive revenue at some point, because we've got such a large balance, right?
Right, because I don't think you used to charge a lot to your revolving fund until you started having to make your.
So it's never broken even?
No, it won't, it won't break.
Yeah, the tuition will cover.
No, because we really have a preschool here to cover our specialized students who need placement.
Right, right. So how?
So they don't pay tuition.
So how do you, how do you, and maybe this is enough for the time, how do you think about that, or how should we think about that in terms of how much of the resources for preschool are for special ed? And how much are not, I guess would be the private, sort of the private side of it. Is the private side covering its expenses? Is sort of my question.
Right.
So I won't take up time tonight, but if there's a way to describe that, and people would like to hear that, I mean.
I will say, when you increased, so one of your, you've got two pre-K classes. One is almost fully funded by your revolving fund. The teacher's fully funded by your revolving fund. That was part of.
When you say revolving fund.
Her salary.
Tuition.
Tuitioning, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so she's charged against the revolving fund, along with some of the educational assistance.
This year, it's three educational assistants that are covered up to them.
When you say revolving fund, that's this fund balance, but it could be funded by the revolving fund, but this fund is dropping. Am I getting that?
So you have, we took in $83,500 in tuition last year.
Right.
And we charged against it $104,000 with the salaries.
Just salaries. So that's, the 104 is not the total expense of the pre-K?
No, just salaries. But basically, the expenses are salaries. I mean, there's some supplies, but there's not big operating costs with outside salaries.
So you could say, if you said half the population of the pre-K, just throw it over there, half the population of the pre-K was special ed, and half wasn't, and easily the private part would be paying for itself. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so if we, if you keep going like this, the revolving fund's going to go to zero in a couple of years.
We were a little more aggressive, I think, this past year, because we had some students present themselves in pre-K who needed one-to-ones. We could not, with the way our budget was, afford to put them in the general fund. So we knew we were exceeding ourselves last year over revenue, but we also knew we had a safety net, because we had the $83,000 starting.
So when we look at our total spend budget, is part of this 104 really kind of spent? Or how do you actually separate if I want to look at the entire spend budget?
Expense.
Right, oh yeah, expense, I'm sorry.
Yeah. It's, because it's a pre-K integrated, I think we do, if we didn't fund any of this revolving fund, the teachers themselves would sit in the special ed teaching function.
So I guess what I'm asking is, once we get to that point where it's not, if the fund continues to be depleted as we would expect, and it's $20,000 to, we're going to be spending more than we would, to get a clear picture in the budget of how much is special ed and how much is general ed, it's, we really don't know precisely. We can't really say.
We do, yeah.
Yeah, we can?
The special ed population fluctuates.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
As students age in, when they turn three, or move to our community, or get identified. But right now, if you picture, we have two classrooms, each with a full-time teacher. About half that teaching time is covered through the tuition.
All right.
And if you look at, we have three teaching assistants that are available to all children. Those are billed to the revolving account and paid for by tuition. The student needs that require one-on-one specialized educational assistance, we own in the operating budget.
All right, great. Thank you very much.
Can I ask one question about, with students who receive special ed services in preschool, does the state pay for some of that? Are there other, or is that all town?
And you'll remember that our, we're collecting more revenue this coming year than we have in the past. We went up with a nominal 3% in the tuition, but we've accepted more tuition children in our preschools.
And we've expanded, so the afternoon, which is additional tuition in the afternoon program. So doing that, though, all the cost to add that program, we said had to be funded through tuition.
Which makes sense. That's what I was never, very clear.
Our revenue will be notably higher this year.
And I think with Chikrin having two pre-K classrooms now, in addition to Pine Hill, I think that the business office is looking at it a little closer too.
Okay.
Now it's a little bit more, there's more to look at and more incentive.
Great. Is that in FY17?
That's it for 17.
Any other questions on 17? All right, FY, item number five on the FY18 report.
FY18, so there's not a whole lot to report on actual numbers right now, because as you know, we just finalized four, remaining four contracts last Tuesday, so we're busy trying to get everyone on the payroll system. But we're hoping to have something for you at your actual meeting. But as of today, I tell you, there's been no unexpected expenses, so we're operating as we predicted at this point. Also, an out-of-district, I checked in with the director, Mrs. Smith, Kristen Smith, and they are still completing their rosters. There's been some movement, but they're anticipating no budgetary impact at this point. So that's good. But as we know from last year, every meeting we came to, there was a meeting report, so it was a constant.
So that's important, to get that update every meeting?
Yes.
Because it is such a good.
Exactly. And as Dr. Keo mentioned, on the facilities, we had an opportunity to tour Pine Hill on the 29th, and Peter was always a gracious host. There's always a gracious commentary. I think they do a wonderful job here, and luckily your capital projects were minimal, so Peter was able to really, I think, do some deep cleaning. I think they had a lot of decluttering and some reorganization that seems like that went on. So that's good for everyone who should come back. Just updating you on the fiscal year 18 project status, windows, we have lots of new windows in, and we're hoping by at least early summer, if not before June 30th, all the windows that we had hoped to replace will be replaced. I took Greg and Scott seeing, before you guys leave, I can show you before and after upstairs of what these wings will look like. They did one prototype, as I noted in the report, to sort of test it out and see how long it took him. It was about a day for installation, so on the next school holiday, I believe it's next week, they're going to do another one. So they're going to pick at these and get these done here and there when they can. And this is an easy installation here, this wall here too. So they will.
It was like a three-phase, or a three-step?
Yeah, they don't, because they've got it all scoped out and designed.
What did we say? It seems like years ago. What did we say we were going to do here? A parfa wall at the bottom, right?
Yeah, the bottom part's going to be like that, insulated wall piece, so it's not going to be windows from floor to floor.
And I'm curious.
Panels, there's going to be.
What kind of, you keep track, like, all the guarantees and warranties and things like that, like, you know, panels that lose their seal and stuff like that?
Yeah.
I mean.
I mean, there's not long warranty on some of the stuff, but yeah.
Were those the original ones?
No. No, those were insulated panels.
But yes, original.
Original with the wing?
Yes.
Those were original?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Those were, those, you wouldn't have a warranty on those.
No, 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 those are insulated sliding panels.
But they were original to the addition, to this section.
They're not from the 50s, like some.
No, no, this addition was.
This addition was.
68 or something.
It was 70s, and the kindergarten wing was late 80s, yeah.
It's the new addition, right?
The older new addition.
Okay.
So we are really pleased with how these are turning out. The nurse's office looks fabulous, same with the secrilegist's office looks really good. And then the extended day wall has been re-done, so they're nice. Extended day, you can see the windows. Nice, you can see through them, and you can open them. And I spoke with a teacher here, and she's like, it's unbelievable. She was saying all the pieces of piping and spray cans and stuff that she used to have to manage the windows. So it is, the teachers are actually a bit of a pain in the ass.
It is a weakness.
Exactly. So you can get rid of a whole closet, but it's worth a thing. The exterior painting, it came in when it was still light out, was completed right before school opened, and I think they did a really nice job. It looks really good, and I understand they painted the basketball hoop of that, so I could go take a peek at that.
It's so impressive that a new flock of geese have taken a residency right at the basketball net.
Never a dull moment for a principal.
And in the auditorium, the, as we mentioned, the AB system is all there, it just needs to be hooked up. And the insulation of the ceiling fans, that was another project, are purchased and are on scope to be installed by the end of this month. Our resident electrician has been very busy, and so we had to prioritize some of this assignments, and so that one will be completed.
And here, as recently as about an hour ago, so it's working hard.
I'm also pleased to say that we did do our onsite insight review this summer, and both Scott and Greg have received drafts of the updated 20-day report. And we hope to sit down with Ralph and Peter. I will try to get that meeting arranged so that we can start talking through it. Our hope is that we will provide comments back to the consultant, and they'll finalize the report and hopefully do a short presentation like they did last time to the school committee in October. I mentioned in here, I don't necessarily want to rush the draft going out the door, because it is such an important tool that we use. I want to make sure that those of us who work with it closely have had time to vet it and ask questions and make sure everything's where we want it to be. Hopefully, you both saw some improvements in the report as far as a budgetary tool for us, and they're still room to tweak as we need. So more to come on that in October, and along with that, we would start formalizing our first draft of our fiscal year 19.
Can't wait. All right, thank you very much. All right, next item is number six, the approval of the non-resident tuition fee. I think we're all reasonably familiar. Andrew, we talked.
Well, essentially, we do have a student attending Pine Hill School from Dover, but because they're not residents, you have to approve tuition that you pay. And so the rate we use comes from the Department of Ed's last per pupil expenditure figure.
Okay. Anybody have any questions about that? We've done this before. All right, so I'd, so we have to vote on this. I've entered a motion to set the tuition rate for students attending Pine Hill School from the outside, from outside the district, as approved by the superintendent per school committee policy JFABE, to be $19,134 for the 2017-18 school year, and that further any, and that further any additional support services, services costs be added to individual students' tuition based on a fair share of those additional services as computed by the administration.
Someone?
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, any discussions? Those in favor? Yes, opposed? No? Question carries? Amy, you got the?
Can I ask you a quick question? How many students are non-resident in the school?
It's just one.
Oh, do we have a number, like, that we're supposed to accept?
No, this happened because when we had a tech program here, I believe, they used a classroom, and I think these kids were, the kids from Dover were part of that classroom. And then tech moved, and because the parents said, hey, they're here and enjoying it, there were two, I believe, can we have them stay? And I guess it was Bill's first year where he said, yeah, it makes sense, and it's not, it's not costing us anything. In fact, it's helping us out. There's no capacity issues, so there's no reason not to. So this is, this is a, it's allowed, and it's.
District to district versus like a school choice.
Yeah, so it's not like.
That's what I was trying to figure out, if it was.
It's not school choice. It's not school choice.
Okay.
It minimized an additional transition for a student who was making.
No, I don't have a problem with it, I just was getting confused with, yeah.
Okay. The consent agenda is just for the minutes from June 13th. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So.
Excellent. Second? Second. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No? All right. Item eight, I wanted to bring up something, the subcommittee assignments, to talk about that. Well, first of all, Andrew, was there anything in the communications that we need to pay particular attention to or that you want to feedback on or anything like that?
No, I don't think so. The subcommittee assignments, obviously you have the list in front of you and then the coordinated program review. This is quite.
Kate, let me just talk about, because we don't want to end too early, the subcommittee assignments. Angie, I thought I saw your name on the building from facilities slot, and now it's not. Did you, were you there? Did you want to be there?
I mean, I'll, I'll do whatever.
We've got Scott and I.
If you and Scott are wanting to do that, that'd be fantastic.
So as far as I'm concerned, anybody can be on any subcommittee liaison.
I just kind of like throw out whatever.
Okay.
Was necessary.
So, so everybody's good with how this comes out? There's, I think I would like to come up with a liaison, and that is, there's a lot of stuff going on with 40B projects, and there's, it just seems like there's a lot of things happening, and I think it makes sense for somebody on the committee to, to know what's going on, to really to be able to talk to Dr. Brown and the administration about stuff that's happening would, first of all, does that make sense to folks? And is to have a volunteer, to be, it'd be sort of like a planning committee liaison. And if you know Addie Mae Weiss, Vice Weiss, she's on the planning committee now and knows everything about everything. So it'd probably be dealing with her, so, is it, do I have a volunteer?
Well, that, or could we invite Addie to give a report?
Yeah, but, but so much, so much is going on, it'd be nice to, for somebody to sort of be in contact, even if they can't go to meetings, just to be up on it.
The only thing we would really be able to find out is what is in the docket in terms of what's being built. I did go to a zoning board meeting and they said they cannot tell us anything in regards to students that we would be educating or anything about the impact on the school system. So we would, we'd be able to look at maybe a schedule of development of what.
Well, part of, you know, there's a presentation at the planning committee last week about Coolidge, the two things on Coolidge, and whether it comes out to be like the rental, the apartments, is going to be three-bedroom, two-bedroom, one-bedroom, and the developer, I mean, I've had a conversation with him about what do you see that comes out of these, and obviously three-bedroom would be more likely to have a kid. He'd rather not do three-bedrooms, but he might. Just, just having, just somebody that we can go to and say what's going on. So I mean, I'll do it, but I think we need somebody. And if somebody else would like to volunteer? Scott, do you want to volunteer?
You know, I was thinking I should probably, that interests me. I'd like to volunteer for the, for the planning committee liaison.
Planning.
Actually, you should start a committee of subcommittees.
Yeah.
Second volunteer for that.
All right.
Thank you.
There's no age limit restrictions on that Coolidge project, is there, right now?
I don't think there's anything. There's just a proposal made that is part of a broader approach to, to doing something that makes sense as opposed to fighting everything that comes through and worrying about, you know, 80 units and how many kids and that kind of thing. All right, we're going to have a planning committee liaison.
Scott, I can, you can go to all the meetings, I can help you.
It may, it may work too, as this, if we can.
Yeah, all those together.
Because there's all this stuff.
So.
You may have a, you may, because this is going to be really dynamic.
And if you find out some of this stuff is happening and you don't really know a whole lot of what's going on, so if you say, hey, they've got a meeting.
Yeah.
All right, so, does, okay, any, any, any other questions or points of discussion from committee? So if anybody has anything for the October 10 meeting, let me know. And we can put it on the agenda.
Can I say something, Erica?
Sure.
I was hoping we could have some results from the challenge success survey. I think that that's going to be by October, that's going to be public knowledge, so.
Okay, Andrew, can you just make a note of that?
Thank you.
So if anybody has anything else, give me a call, and I may not be here for that meeting, so.
Based on that call?
Based on what I hear. No, no, that's not right.
Everybody send your message.